I'd like to call to order the council meeting, Amberly Council Meeting of November 13th. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardock?
Here.
Peg Conway?
Here.
Ed Hattenbach?
Here.
Alita Kaymine?
Here.
Tom Muthing?
Here.
Ray Warren?
Here.
Natalie Wolf?
Here.
Scott Larmour?
Here.
Kevin Frank?
Here.
Chief Wallace?
Here.
And if everyone could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda this evening is our minutes from our last regularly scheduled meeting. The minutes were circulated in advance. There was one minor edit to those that was also circulated. Are there any further changes to the minutes? If not, we can consider the minutes approved. We'll now move on to the finance report for September 2017.
Included in your council packet is the summary for the UAN report in addition to the actual financial documents that were included in the packet. The summary for the month of September includes the earnings tax. Our earnings tax collections totaled a little over $293,000. This is down about 1.2% from September of 2016's collections of over $296,000. The total amount received for earnings tax year-to-date is a little over $2 million. Our estimate for the year is $3 million. That's what we started out with, our original estimate. We are currently at about 67% of our collection at this point in time as of the end of September. Property tax for the month of September, we took in a little over $86,000. And then for the local government fund, it was about a $5,300 check. The total revenue for the month of September, $408,000. And that brings us to a total revenue collected overall of $3.7 million, which represents about 78% of our original estimate for 2017. On the expense side, the expenses for the month of September, $284,000. And that brings our total expenses to three, a little over $3 million, which represents about 62% of our 2017 budget that has been expended. That leaves us with an unencumbered general fund balance of $5.9 million. And that concludes my report.
Are there any questions? I mean...
One question. Mr. Larmour, on the earnings tax collected, it seems, and I know you've done, you've commented on this in previous months, the earnings tax collected seems to be a little bit running behind this year. But yet, when we look at total revenue collected, it looks like we're compensating for, for lack of a better term, compensating for that shortfall. And so where is that other revenue coming from? That's...
It's coming from a variety of sources. We've got additional revenues through interest. We have additional interest through mayor's court, have interest, or dollars in the property taxes. So there's a variety of places. So you are correct in your assessment that there are areas of it that we are making it up. We will not make it up totally. Our earnings tax estimate for the year, we started out with a $3 million estimate. I think realistically, we're probably about that 2.6 level, 2.6 million. But there have been some areas where we have done extremely well on the, on non-earnings tax revenue for the general fund.
Any other questions? Okay. We'll now move on to the swearing-in of a new police officer for Amberly Village. And I've commented on this every time I've had the privilege to do this. This is one of the real privileges of being mayor, to swear-in our new officers. And this evening is especially a privilege, to swear-in an officer with an outstanding track record and a very, very challenging role as the commander of the heroin task force. So we'll come forward. Before we do the swearing-in, the chief will introduce our guest. And we're very honored to have members of the other police forces that oversee the task force in a very important way.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to introduce Tom's wife, Ann Jeanette Levy, his mother, Louise Metters, and his grandson, Jay Fallon. Also in the back of the room is the guy we're taking Tom from, is Norwood Police Chief Bill Kramer. Thanks for coming. Chief from Newtown, Tom Signan, and the chief from Harrison, Chuck Lindsey. Chuck also actually oversees the heroin task force through the Chiefs Association. So we appreciate him coming today.
Okay. You know that you were kicked this morning. Is that why? I, I talk about, to solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
That I will support the laws of the Constitution and the states of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
And the laws and ordinances of the village of Amberly Village.
And the laws and ordinances of Amberly Village of Amberly.
And I will discharge the duties of police officer.
I will discharge the duties of police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, guys, for now. You're welcome. You're very welcome. Glad you, in the role you take on, in a very fair, challenging environment. So I wish you luck.
Thank you, and thank the council and Scott for all the support. Chief Wallace, we're going to kick you by the five, so thank you so much.
Oh. There is one other part that we'd like to, this is a badge, and obviously as a police officer, you have had a badge, but this is an Amberly Village badge, so very much would And it's something we worked with the county on, and the county commissioners, all three like to have.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. of them were very interested in making this happen. They unfortunately were not able to make the meeting tonight, but they very much wished they could have been here. So I, we thank them for their support. And, you know, this is a position that the county is working with Amberly Village on, and the county actually funds the position. And as I said, it is very much a critical position right now. Now move on to the next item on our agenda, and we have two citizens scheduled to speak. First, Ms. Schoenfeld Field. And again, if you can just state your name for the record, and your address.
Brenda Schoenfield, 7640 Elbrook Avenue, Amberly Village. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmen and women. Thank you for the opportunity to speak unite in defense of the deer. I have been a resident of Amberly Village for 47 years. The deer have never been a problem to our family or our property. In fact, the property where we live now has the original 37-year-old plantings. I enjoy opening my shades in the morning and seeing deer in my yard, either a doe in a fawn or a buck with antlers. Therefore, I was shocked to hear that crossbow hunting was being considered in the village. Why weren't the pro-deer residents consulted? This is not how I want my tax dollars spent. Spending my tax dollars with allowing me to have any input how this money is being spent is wrong. I do not approve of my tax dollars being used to torture animals, pay policemen time or time and a half to shoot deer, to rent trucks to haul away the bodies, and the cost of dressing the deer and sending the antlers to Columbus is an expense that should not be in the Amberly Village budget without a vote. My daughter, who also lives in the village, suggested that the sight of a wounded deer dragging its body across section ridge or galbraith roads with an arrow protruding from its body would horrify and traumatize her children. We are Jewish, and a significant number of Amberly's residents are also Jewish. Our law prohibits the torture of one, the torah is of animals. The Torah says one is not allowed to inflict suffering on animals. Also, if a wounded deer with an arrow embedded in its body is hit by a car, Amberly Village is liable for this accident. My daughter also brought the image to my mind that a wounded or a lost dead deer would bring scavenger animals like coyotes and vultures to the village. In closing, the American Veterinary Association does not approve bow hunting as a humane method of killing animals. Also, the Humane Society of the United States says bow hunting is cruel and accomplishes nothing. Do the right thing and cancel this cruel project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any specific questions? Thank you very much. Now move on to Dr. Millie Schaefer, who also wants to speak on. And again, if you could just state your name and address.
Yes, Dr. Millie Schaefer, 3320 Ashwood Drive, Cincinnati. I just live on the other side from you guys. First of all, thank you for letting me speak. Just before I start this, I've had to cut my talk down because I realized I got to be down to three than five. I will tell you, there is a lot going on in regards to urban deer. And I'm not going to be able to really get you abreast of a lot of very interesting developments. We are working, Cincinnati Urban Deer Advocates, very closely with Jim Burkhart, who is the park superintendent. So let me just share a few things with you, and hopefully we can touch base at a later time, and I can bring you up to speed on some of these developments and some of the things that's happening in Cincinnati that you probably do not know about. Again, the urban deer is a very different issue than all those deer running around out there in the wild. And your state wildlife departments do not have the expertise dealing with urban deer, and some of them will quietly tell you that. Hunting has always been the way they've managed all the deer running out in the wild. That has posed problems for urban deer and for those of us who want a lifestyle of coexistence. Now, unfortunately, bow hunting does not work even after you submit these animals to all this cruelty. I'm just going to show you briefly, we don't have time to go into depth. This is the park's own data, and I plotted it on a graph. No hunting in Alms Park, okay? Hunting in Alms Park a lot longer. Do you think the deer population dropped? All park, same story, okay? No hunting back in these years. Now they've been hunting. They did sharpshooting here. You get a sharp dip, and you get what is called the classical rebound effect. Did the overpopulation drop? You decide. We have been researching data and doing science-driven approaches. We've been interacting with park board commissioners and a number of meetings with Burkhart. All this got started without a lot, an in-depth study of data. Basically, bow hunting is just a cruel blood sport, and it's often addictive. As she pointed out, it's not approved by veterinarian associations or any of the national humane societies. Other countries actually oppose this. If you tried to do this in England, you would all be arrested for animal cruelty. Wildlife biologists would tell you that bow hunting is not a population control measure, it's a recreational blood sport. Recognize it for what it is. Deer often scream and run long distances with arrows in them, and the wounded deer often die elsewhere, creating dangerous situations. We have been monitoring Drake Park. Well, first of all, let me tell you about what upset people in Mount Airy. A doe with an arrow in her was seen by many motorists struggling along Colerain Avenue, and that was during the authorized hunting season. That could have been a serious or deadly accident, and communities are liable for those. Wounded deer do often die elsewhere on other people's property. That's a problem. You can't just go retrieve that deer without permission. That's trespassing. 60 days in jail, $500 fine. Bow hunting in Drake Park, it's fourth year. They snuck around and started doing it. Three of those years resulted in deer vehicle accidents due to the proximity of I-71 and busy Red Bank Road during the opening of the hunting season, which is the end of September 1st of October. That's not the rut season. This has all been documented. The other thing that happened, deer left the area. And a number of them went elsewhere, and they did not return. And guess what they're doing elsewhere? I just got back from the wildlife meetings with Dr. Michael Tonkavix, ODNR deer program minister. He said, "Don't focus on deer density." He's sitting there laughing at some of what urban people are focusing on. There is no one correct density. The 10 to 20 deer per square mile, that's bogus. And they'll tell you that if you go to the administrators at the top of these programs. Reducing deer by certain number, misleading. This is coming from him. The deer are still there. You still have to work out ways to work out a coexistence, and if you've got a problem on your property, you've got to work it out. The real issue is tolerance. He said, "That's the issue." When decisions are based on someone's tolerance, cruel things often happen. You know the history. Just look at what happens to animals and peoples when people become intolerant. Coexistence is part of an urban culture. There is a need for education and humane implementation of methods to stabilize the deer population. I'll tell you right now, we don't even know how many deer we have. Neither does the park. They never did know. We're working on a way to get...
If you could...
Okay, let me conclude. Clifton folks rejected bow hunting. They have a reproduction patrol going. The federal government has approved two different birth control products for urban deer, and both are being used around the world. Dr. Rubdick, and I'm going to quote one Tufts to close this, "Deer have entered our backyards and essentially become unruly guests for at least some of us. We are bound by suburban rules and dealing with them, and the violence is not how we deal with neighbors we don't like." I am also going to send you some horrific pictures that other people have found and reported. I suggest you take a look at them. This is what we residents are finding in our parks and on our highways.
Thank you very much. I mean, the one thing I will point out, this was, this has been something that we've had many meetings for years on. This is not something that was done behind closed doors, and it very much was announced. We have a deer policy in Amberly that was developed with a lot of input from residents. We do not do quote-unquote bow hunting. Our deer culling programs has generally been done with rifles, and only in French Park and on, at Amberly Green. The only bow hunting we're currently considering is not hunting. It would be sharpshooting by people in an area where we are not currently able to go in with guns.
You mean bow hunting, but calling with Ross bow?
Yeah. But it would be done by not hunters or anything like that. It's done by sharpshooters. So...
Same thing. Bow hunting...
Okay.
Yeah, we can talk about that.
I mean, we, as I said, we have spent a tremendous amount of time on this, so it is not accurate to say that the village has not done this in the public domain.
I didn't say that. Drake Park actually didn't do it in the public domain. And now all hell is about ready.
Amberly has.
Yes, I'll give you credit for that.
We'll now move on to our committee reports, and the first committee report is the finance committee.
Thank you, Mayor. First item that I want to address is adjustments to 2017 appropriations. The appropriations are set in December of the previous year to cover the upcoming year. Often situations arise during the year which require adjustments to these appropriations. For this year, for 2017, we require three different additional appropriations to cover some of our expenditures. The first item is an $88,000 additional appropriation to police, cover police expenditures. Second item is for the Kenwood Southwest Jeds Agency Fund, where the collections have exceeded our expectations, and we need to do an additional appropriation. And thirdly, the Mayor's Court Agency Fund, where we have additional $20,000 due to the overestimation of revenue. Accordingly, I would like to introduce ordinance number 2017-12, authorizing and ordnance amending appropriations for fiscal year 2007.
Second. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2017-12, which would amend our appropriations for fiscal year 2017. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Okay, if not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2017-12. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardock?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alita Kaymine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolf?
Yes.
This ordinance is supposed to be adopted in its one single reading. We need to...
Now, this, as an appropriations ordinance, it provides that those are...
Okay. Next item. On October 26th, the investment committee met to discuss our investment policy and the investment strategy with our advisor from PNC. And basically, our investments we currently have at the end of October, $600, $600 and $500 million in investments, which were in various CDs and agency obligations. There was another $250,000 CD which had matured, but hadn't been reinvested by the end of the month. Our total investment yield is average is now at a rate of about 1.2%, which is approximately three to four times higher, the yield is three to four times higher than what it was at this point last year. Our average maturity of these investments is one year. So we have all of our investments laddered, that we have a rolling investment of $250,000 every two or three months. So our portfolio, we're not having ourselves extended, we're not chasing yields, we're just taking very conservative approaches to our investment philosophy. As a result, we're seeing increased income without an increase in investment risk.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments related to the investment committee?
That concludes my report.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the police and fire committee.
Thank you. Tonight, we're going to bring to a close the legislation regarding the hiring of auxiliary peace officers. Remember, this was brought up two months ago for the first time, brought through the police-fire committee, recommending that we go forward with this to establish some part-time officers primarily to work details in the village so that there's a consistent presence of our officers, and they won't do road duty or any, they're not full-time, it's kind of a separate function. So accordingly, I move that we adopt ordinance number 2017-09, authorizing the hiring of auxiliary peace officers and establishing the auxiliary police unit. So move.
Second. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2017-09, which would authorize the hiring of auxiliary police officers to work details and other functions. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2017-09, which would authorize the hiring of auxiliary police officers to work details and other functions. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2017-09. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardock?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alita Kaymine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolf?
Yes.
That concludes my report. Okay, we will now move on to the compensation and benefits committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the compensation and benefits committee met earlier today to discuss our annual holiday gift cards for our employees of the village, and we, the committee discussed the, essentially the continuation, the recommendation of the village to continue our program at a very, you know, we give our village employees a Christmas gift in lieu of the many, many years ago party. But we've been doing this for several years now, and the reports have been positive from our employees to thank them for their service. Just a small token of our appreciation, of course, could never be enough. But we have been giving for the past several years $250 gift cards. They can, employees have the option of taking that in cash or in a gift card, and the committee recommended to continue that again this year at that level. So we are, I guess I am moving that we, the council approve holiday gift card program at the $250 amount again this year.
Second. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we approve a resolution to grant similar to what we've done in prior years, a $250 gift card or cash bonus to our employees. Is there any discussion, questions?
I just have a question in terms of, does council need to approve this?
Yes, council needs to approve it by motion. We don't do a resolution or ordinance on it, but by motion, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we approve a motion to provide for a $250 gift card slash cash bonus to employees. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Being noted that the motion passes unanimously.
And that concludes my report.
Okay, we'll now move on to the land development committee, and as chair of the land development committee, I'll present a report. Tonight is the second reading related to an ordinance which would establish a tax increment financing structure related to our development on the north site, which is the Mercy Medical Office Building. At the last meeting, we explained the benefits of providing this tax increment financing, which would provide the opportunity to get funds into a fund that we could use related to infrastructure on that portion of the village. We originally were hoping that we might do the final reading this evening, but it, we must have the approval of the finance committee, of the, of the school board prior to doing that, and there were some minor hiccups related to that in this understanding. So we will, we will have the third and final reading at our December meeting, which, which doesn't impact our timetable as far as getting the tip in place prior to the new office building really going into existence. So are there any questions or comments related to that? If not, then... that, and there were some minor hiccups related to that and misunderstanding. So we will, we will have the third and final reading at our December meeting, which, which doesn't impact our timetable as far as getting the TIF in place prior to the new office building really going into existence. So are there any questions or comments related to that? If not, then that concludes my report related to the Land Development Committee, and that will be on the agenda at our December meeting. We'll now move on to the Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. A few items I'd like to highlight from the Managers' Report. The first one is a personnel-related item. You may recall, a few months ago, we lost one of our maintenance worker, fire slash firefighters. The individual had to relocate out of state, and so we have been seeking recruitment of a replacement for David Stone in our Maintenance Department and Fire Department. And this past week, we've announced that we have hired a, our, one of our current employees who has been part-time since 2014. His name is Bobby Williams, and he primarily works as the custodian for this building. He does help us out on the maintenance side when, when we need him to go out on leaf collection or brush collection, so he has gained some experience in that over the last couple of years. But he competed quite nicely in the process, and we had quite a few applicants, and Bobby rose to the top, so we're quite proud to be able to promote from within, from a part-time position. And Bobby will start with the village on November 27. He, he does have his CLD, but he has to get a different certification on that, CDL, CDL, thank you, CDL. He does not have fire school, fire training, so he does have to go to fire school, and that will most likely occur in the spring, so he won't have that fire skill set until after he passes fire, fire school in the spring. Second item I wanted to mention is in regards to leaf collection. Obviously, we are in the full throes of leaf collection, and residents are putting their leaves at the, out of the street. We encourage you to continue doing that. We will continue collecting leaves until the end of December. For those residents who are accumulating brush, we would encourage you to get rid of your brush through Rumkey. You can bundle it in four-foot lengths and put it out for Rumkey. They will take your, take your brush. If that's not acceptable to you, there are other ways that you can get rid of your brush and keep it on site for a certain period of time until we resume our brush collection, which will be the first week of January of 2018. Third item I want to mention is in regards to the Drug Takeback Day. We started this program a few years ago, and it's been successful. Our residents have asked for it, and so this past month, we had a Drug Takeback Day here at the village and collected 34 pounds of prescription drugs that residents wanted to, to get rid of. So this was a very successful prescription drop-off, and we will continue to offer that to our residents at least once or twice a year. And the last item I wanted to mention is something that has gotten a little bit of press recently, and that is in regards to the left turn signal. Last month, council authorized a left turn signal to be installed on Ridge Road going westbound at Ronald Reagan, and you awarded that contract to Capital Electric in the amount of a little over $12,200. And this past week, the traffic signal was activated, was installed and activated, and so it has been in use since last Thursday, I believe. And this was just a, the council was very gracious in, in approving that last month, but just to give you a reminder as to how that occurred is that TEC Engineering approached the village and indicated that the Ohio Department of Transportation had a program whereby they would pay for a signal retiming study on Ridge Road. So we partnered with the city of Redding, and between the two of us, we moved forward with that traffic retiming study. There were some modifications made to our traffic lights, but the most noticeable item that we obtained out of that particular study was the justification for our left turn signal on, onto Ronald Reagan from Ridge. And so we're just pleased that we were able to accommodate and to move forward with that project, and I'm sure that we will continue monitoring it to see what types of modifications need to be made at that particular intersection. So very pleased the council has taken that action. We've got it installed. And that concludes my report.
There's at least one question for the manager.
I actually have two. The first one is, are you going to replace the custodian?
Yes.
Good.
Yes, we have to do something to keep the building clean. We are talking internally as to whether that would be a company to do it, or whether we'd be able to find an employee similar to Bobby Williams who could take care of the building. The difficulty is that Bobby has done a very good job of taking care of the building on a very limited basis, but he also takes care of the grounds here. So you may have seen him on the gator. He travels up and down section, Ridge Road, actually part of section as well, does litter collection in that area, takes care of our ball fields. He's the one that drags the ball fields. So he plays a very vital role for, for the village. So can we replicate that in a contract? That remains to be seen, but those are some of the discussions we're having internally, but we will, we will replace him somehow, somewhat.
And one other question. The 31st of December is a Sunday, so is the very last day of leaf collection going to be the 28th? Like, you absolutely will not do it into the following year?
That is correct. It'll be the last working day of December, so December 28th.
I have a very late-dropping tree, and so I need to be very clear with my lawn people when's the last day?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you. So December 28th is the last one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the manager?
I just wanted to comment that the folks who live in the northeast quadrant in particular of the village are very excited about this left turn signal. I've heard a lot of positive feedback about it. It's very exciting, so thank you to everybody. I drive it every day, and I'm enjoying it myself, so thank you very much.
Any other questions for the manager? If not, we'll move on to the Chief's Report.
Thank you. I made it back just in time to talk. It took two people to fill my head out. The, I just have two things to talk about. The first one is, a while back, we talked about the burglary we had on Deena Lane. Good news as of last week is, we had identified and made an arrest on the burglary. The, the one guy is going to take a plea deal to 16 years in prison. The girl's going to take a plea to 16 years in prison, and then the third girl that pawned the guns, she wants a better deal. She's asking for seven years. So on that one, we're probably going to end up going to trial because we're not going to settle for seven years. That's a good, so kudos to our, our detective and everyone that worked on the case. It worked out really well for us. We recently, I had to put something out, a reference to burglary we had down on Bluegrass and attempted burglary we had on section. We actually, I spoke about it last month, and as of last month at the council meeting, I said there was no suspect, but we actually were pretty sure who the suspect was, and we had already brought him in on some additional receiving stolen property charges. And while we had him in custody, we were able to do a search warrant and get his DNA. With that, he's actually committed about 21 or 22 burglaries throughout Cincinnati, Woodlawn, Wyoming, Redding, and a bunch of different areas. The good thing is, in the city's burglary, they finally got DNA, they're going to be able to match it to what we got. And then last Wednesday, they were, Redding actually got a call from a resident, they had a small foot chase, and we finally were able to put this guy into one house, which is, we're able to move forward on the burglary charges on him. So he's in custody right now and still locked up in jail. Concludes my report.
Are there any questions for the chief? If not, we'll move on to the Mayor's Report, and first, related to the Environmental Stewardship Committee. First, the date for the One Stop Drop, which is our annual event where we provide recycling services for paper, electronics, and some other items. That date has been set as Sunday, April 8, and there'll be further details. The plan is, all the same types of things that we've been focusing on, on recycling in prior years will also be provided for at that event. The next meeting of the Environmental Stewardship Committee is Monday, November 27, and that will be the final meeting of 2017. And finally, related to the Environmental Stewardship Committee, they got a, the committee received a proclamation, and I'll read it. "On behalf of the members of the Ohio House of Representatives of the 132nd General Assembly, I extend a well-deserved recognition to the Environmental Stewardship Committee of Amberly Village on your commitment to educating local residents during your successful tree walk and talk event in Amberly Village." That event was held in October. I'm not going to read the remainder, but this was something that our local state representative, Bridget Kelly, put together for us, so we're very appreciative. And then finally, on, on my report, just some comments related to the elections, and then we have to deal with kind of a timetable. You know, all of our incumbents have been re-elected, and, and that's, you know, many times it is a, it's a great thing, but it's something that I know that we as all council members also recognize, that it's always good to get a fresh point of view at times, and so it's critical, and I know everyone shares this view, that as we have committee meetings, and we, we always try to reach out to residents to try to get input. I think we as, you know, as elected officials, as we look over policy, it's always great to get that fresh point of view, and we just need to find a way, but you know, the great thing for Amberly Village, on the execution side, it is always critical, in my mind, to have, you know, long-term employees, and we are very fortunate in the case of Amberly Village. They have a village manager that is now in his, going on his seventh year, and a chief that is also into his seventh year as chief, and has been on with Amberly Village for a lot longer than that. So we are very, very fortunate that we have such continuity, but as I said, it's, it's critical that we reach out to get those fresh point of view and get, get a different input so that we can consider that when we make our policy decisions. And then related to elections, our charter provides that, that the new council gets sworn in on December 1st. December 1st is a Friday, and given the early sundown in the village and, and the Sabbath, we are proposing that we do the swearing-in on the 4th, which will be the Monday, following Monday, and we are proposing to do that at 5:00 PM on the 4th. And then...
I know that there is an outstanding doodle for Health Education and Welfare Committee, and I, and I think that that might need some adjustments as well. December 4th, either 4 or 4:30 is one of the proposed times, but I've heard from Ray that maybe we need to, that could be the only available time, so maybe we need to just reschedule that entire thing, because if it's at 4:30, that's not going to give us enough time.
Should we do the swearing-in at 4:30, and you have a meeting after? I mean, it's Friday, and we'll take 10 minutes, 11 minutes?
Okay, just, I mean, time, just to be, make everyone aware, we seem to be conflicting things here.
And then, also, our charter provides that at the first regularly scheduled meeting of the council, which will be December 11, that the council will do things like elect the mayor, vice mayor, appoint the clerk, the solicitor in committee, so we will plan on doing that at the meeting on December 11. And that concludes my Mayor's Report. Are there any questions or comments for the board? Any new business?
I promise I won't do this every month, but I did go to my first local school decision-making committee meeting at PRM at the beginning of this, beginning, whatever it was, last week, two weeks ago, and it was really a good experience. They have started this year having what they call the monthly summit, whereby they bring together the, the LSDMC, the PTO, and the foundation, and they have a joint meeting for an hour where, in which the principal and the outreach coordinator give their presentations to everybody, sort of like Scott gives his sort of state of the school presentation, and then they divide into their three bodies for separate meetings. And they're all open meetings, so any, any parents who want to come can come, and if you ever wanted to come for just that first hour and kind of mingle, you could do that. But I, I think it's going to be really interesting. One of the things they're really making a priority right now is the school is very crowded. It's a success, and that's a good thing, and so there's going to be efforts in communicating with the district on how to solve this problem, so I think it's going to be really interesting. Thank you.
Any other new business?
I just forgot to mention that the second week of December, I don't know the date, but we'll have the menorah lighting, the Orthodox community here in council chambers again, and I'll get that date out and ask Nicole to share it on social media.
Okay, great. Any other item? Okay, the last item on the agenda, and just explanation, this, I think, is the fifth year that the council has, has gone through a process where we do a evaluation of the village manager. It was always felt by council that this is something that we should try to do on an annual basis, and, and we now have the process down, that we, we try to do it in November and December. This evening will be our first kind of meeting related to that, where the council kind of sits down and starts discussing an employee appraisal. And employee appraisals and employee matters-like appraisals are an item that under the Ohio law is appropriate for an executive session. So I would hereby like to move that we here adjourn into executive session to begin the manager's review. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adjourn into an executive session. Please call the roll with, with respect to that.
Can I just make a quick clarification, just for the record? I consider an appraisal to be for the employment and compensation of the manager, which is, employment and compensation are the key words for the statute, so I think it's appropriate.
Thank you. Okay, please call the roll.
Rich Bardak?
Yes.
Kate Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alita Kaymine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wall? Yes.
Okay, meeting's your body, or you will come back. I'm sorry. We will come back into regular session following the executive session, but it is expected that the meeting will be adjourned shortly thereafter.